Of Wednesday, January 15th, 2025, this meeting is being held in the Harvey Hearing Room. We are starting at 5:02. The meeting is available via Zoom and will be broadcast on WCAT. May I have the roll call, please?
Ms. Leonard, yes. Mr. Littieri?
Yes.
Mr. Matucci?
Yes.
Ms. Petrie?
Here.
Mr. Pearnton?
Here.
Ms. Barry?
Here.
Ms. Powell?
Here. Please rise with the pledge of allegiance.
Mr. Pearnton Camilias.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any public comment on Zoom?
That would be me. I do not see any hands raised.
Okay. We are here tonight to discuss the language for the override ballot question. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
For?
Motion to discuss the ballot question.
I need a motion for what the ballot question will say.
Got it. A motion to approve a tiered format ballot question to the town council. Question one being, shall the town of Winthrop be allowed to assess an additional $3.5 million in real estate and personal property taxes for the funding of FY '26 Winthrop Public Schools' operational budget for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2025? And question two being, shall the town of Winthrop be allowed to assess $1.45 million in real estate taxes and personal property taxes for the funding of a school stabilization fund for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2025?
Okay, I will open that up for, oh, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Barry. I will open this up for discussion.
So just a point, it, that's the menu, it's a menu question versus a tiered question?
Oh, sorry, yes.
Yeah, so we've been talking about menus and tiers and pyramids. So just to clarify her motion that it was a menu.
Okay. Can I have from our budget subcommittee, can I have an explanation of how this is going to be different than what we originally sent to, discussed and sending to the town council?
So the original, the original tiered question was that we're going to have a $4.95 million question, which was 1A, and 1B was going to be 3.5, sorry, 4.95 with 1.495 going into stabilization. And the second question was going to be 3.5 million with $100,000 going into stabilization. That's changed now to a $3.5 million override question, number one. And number two would be, that would be for the, to go into the regular budget and we've been sustaining from last year to this year. And then from a $1.45 million question for question two would be for stabilization. So it's two separate questions, which would mean that you could vote yes on both, no on both, yes on one, no on one, whichever one you want to vote yes or no on.
Okay. What happens if the state, the money that we are asking for the budget, the 3.5, does not pass, but the stabilization money does pass?
So that would start the stabilization account, would put that in there, and you would be able to access that if we need it. So wouldn't be, wouldn't go into the regular budget until we ask for it. Now, at that time, we would have to take a vote, which would go then to the council, and they would have to take a vote to give it to us.
Questions, discussion?
Just the likelihood, so the way the question was posed was if the, if question one, which was for $3.5 million to go into the FY '26 operational budget to stabilize our ability to run schools in FY '26, just like we're running in FY '25. If that question failed and the $1.495 million question, which is question number two, which is money being appropriated to a stabilization fund, if that passed and, so question two passes, but question one doesn't, then the school is in a similar position where we still have a pretty big budget deficit. So the school committee would have to decide, like you said, like Mr. Matucci said, if they want to petition the town council to access that money that passed for the stabilization fund and be able to utilize that in the FY '26 budget, if that makes sense, more sense.
I think this, I think this makes sense, and I'm glad to see this. I do think, though, it needs to be made clear that the, if the 1.4 passes, but the 3.5 doesn't, we, and we get approval to access the school stabilization fund, that is still less than half of what we need to keep ourselves at a level service position. So if only one of these things passes and it's the smaller number, we're still in a position looking at pretty dramatic likely staffing cuts, cut extracurriculars. So I worry a little, and I think the messaging needs to be really clear, that by voting for only the smaller amount, you are not going to basically protect us from the catastrophic cuts that would still need to be made, right? I think this is important.
Yeah, and I do, I, you know, the idea of a stabilization fund is for the school district to continue to be fiscally responsible in having money in a stabilization account to help sustain, if you have a two and a half override and you achieve that, to help to sustain the length that that two and a half override of the 3.5 million is going to last, okay? So if you have a stabilization fund, then the money lasts many more years than it would if you didn't have a stabilization fund. So if you don't get the override money, and as we've stated from the beginning, you know, our, our projection was opening up school next year, depending upon what the town gives us for additional monies, but if it's exactly the same as what we got last year, we'd be about 3.5 million in deficit. So, you know, the idea of the 3.5 million to get us to a level service is still a pretty real possibility. Now, there are other mitigating factors that can happen. The town could give us a lot more money if they had to, or if they could. My guess, that would be at the detriment of other town departments, and that has never been our goal or our purpose in creating our budget. So you're right, if question one of the $3.5 million operational override to run school in FY '26 fails, yet the 1.4 stabilization account passes, we're still, without touching the stabilization account, approximately 3.5 in the hole. So we would have to go and petition the town to access that money, and if we did get it all, depending upon where we land at the end of the school year and the town's appropriation, that 1.49 in stabilization that we would take out would not support or cover a $3.5 million deficit. And again, the idea of stabilization is to lengthen the amount of time that an operational override will last. It is not our goal to come back to the town in one or two years or three years to ask for additional money. So ideally, we'd like to see both pass so that we don't have to come back, you know, within the next few years to ask for an additional override, given the rest of the financial needs of the community.
Other questions, other discussion?
I think this is, you know, the, I think this is a great idea. It gives more flexibility. What it also does is it guarantees if the 1.45 passed, for example, that 1.45 is guaranteed to go into stabilization each and every year. So I think that's important to stress. And a lot of this, like Ms. Leonard said earlier, is based on education and letting people understand that, you know, there's a cause and effect of everything you do in life, and there's a cause and effect for this. So I think it's important to make sure that we focus our attention on messaging and letting people become 100% aware of, you know, what it costs, what the obligation would be of the taxpayer, and what the schools can and cannot do with this money. So I'm very pleased with this outcome.
And I think the other point that needs to be messaged very clearly to the community is that a school stabilization fund is designated to the schools only. So that stabilization fund that is built cannot, no one else can petition the town council to take money out of that account for any deficits that they may have in other departments, and I think that's a very valid question for people that are voting. They want to make sure where the money is going, that it's going to be used for the purpose it's intended. And the rules, regulations, and law around stabilization accounts are very, very tight.
Yes.
Forgive me not for not knowing the answer to this question, but has the council discussed starting a stabilization fund like we talked about a few meetings ago?
Well, we're definitely, I mean, the plan has always been to start a stabilization fund, and this would be the fourth stabilization account the town has. The town has a capital stabilization fund, has a general stabilization fund, and a building stabilization fund, and now it would have an educational stabilization fund. And like the superintendent said, each one has specific purposes. This one would only be able to be accessed upon request from the school committee to the council, and then it would be distributed from the education, the stabilization fund to the school budget, school operating budget. So yes, I mean, the goal has always been, obviously, if nothing passes, it's going to be harder to start a stabilization fund, but that has been the goal and will, and has continued to be the goal, and the council is well aware of that.
May I ask a question?
Yes.
You said there was a town stabilization fund also, is one of the categories?
There's three stabilization funds right now. There's a capital, there's capital stabilization, general stabilization, and building stabilization.
And the general stabilization, what are the parameters for use for that?
It's a little more, much more leeway than capital or building stabilization would. It would be for emergency purposes only, but that's also how, you know, we generate our bond rating and how the town gets its bond rating. And for example, the fact that we had, you know, ideally, the state likes to see 10% of your budget in stabilization fund. In a, you know, general stabilization fund, we do not have that much, but we have a decent amount that, you know, the budget is upwards of $70 million. And, you know, the fact that we created these funds, maintained them, and added to them over the years gave us the ability to save over $6 million in interest on the life of the middle high school. So it's incredibly important, obviously. It's like anybody in their personal, you want to have a rainy day fund, so to speak, and that's what the general stabilization fund is for.
Does, if the school were to have a stabilization fund, would that contribute to boosting the...
It doesn't boost the bond, well, you know, and I don't want to say that. I've heard different, I've had different opinions, because I've asked the state several times, is when you're looking at a bond rating, is it a culmination of all stabilization funds put together, or is it just general? And I've heard both sides, so I will get a more definitive answer on that. I've always been under the impression that was all your stabilization funds put together, and recently, in the last couple of years, I've been told it's just the general stabilization. So I will get a clarification of that.
Lisa's still in my line, so I'm out. I was trying to make a clip.
Mr. Pearnton?
Has the 1.45 been broken down into what each, that would account to each household or each $683,000 assessed?
Roughly $270.
Okay.
And the 3.5 is roughly $660.
Yeah, okay. All right.
So to summarize, if I'm doing this accurately, if people were to vote for both of these, it is essentially the equivalent of voting for the 4.9 that we originally had asked for, but this gives people the option of, if they feel that that's too much, but they still want to give us some amount of money. But we will still be, if we get the three, our budget would be whole for the coming year, but not the following years.
Yeah, I mean, it's hard to, it's hard to project that. It certainly, you know, it all depends on the revenue that comes into the town, it all depends upon the appropriation from the town, it depends upon, you know, the grants that we have. You know, I've probably said it 400 times, there are not a lot of outside accounts left, you know, for us to access. Those were the schools' quote, you know, the revolving accounts for like preschool tuition and circuit breaker, those are the accounts that we were accessing and really accessed for this school year, not to make any cuts, and drawing those accounts down very low. So there's not a lot of wiggle room for extra money coming from there. So, you know, it certainly would not sustain us for a very long time.
Okay. Any further discussion, any other questions?
Can we, can you read the questions, the exact questions you have? Just so everybody knows who's going on.
Just give her the one that's to eliminate the, the question.
Question one.
Yeah, make sure she...
Shall the town of Winthrop be allowed to assess an additional $3.5 million in real estate and personal property taxes for the funding of fiscal year '26? Funding of the fiscal year '26 Winthrop Public Schools' operational budget for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2025? And then question two, shall the town of Winthrop be allowed to assess $1.45 million in real estate taxes and personal property taxes for the funding of a school stabilization fund for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2025? These questions will be sent to the town council as requested, and these have been vetted, initially vetted by state officials.
So they've been, we've discussed them, the town CFO, Sarah Johnson, and myself met with an attorney from the Department of Labor Service, DLS, yesterday, day before yesterday or yesterday, to go over the questions and ask some specific clarifying questions regarding the stabilization fund being part of an operational override and to clarify that that was an acceptable practice. And, and he did review the questions and felt as though the language was in line with the two and a half override manual and the language and rules and regulations. He did explain that it also should go to the state office, Jim, which office is it?
Secretary of State.
Secretary of State's office, just for clarification. Sometimes when it goes to them, when you say we'd like to put this on a ballot, so the town council would have to vote the questions, and then the town clerk would send it to the state to look at the questions, they may take out, you know, a word or add a comma. There's also, we also are asking, because this is a local election, unlike the national election, we would like to give the voters the opportunity to understand what a yes vote means and what a no vote means, and that that go directly on the ballot. So the secretary's office will, will determine whether or not we have to tweak anything, and then give Denise Quist as the town clerk the final blessing of the ballot to be as drafted as such.
Okay.
Is the plan trust to vote on these two things separately, like the wording of the ballot question and then the additional information?
So the additional information, whether or not you want the additional information on there, I think it's really one, it's really one, it's going to be one ballot. And like I said, the only thing that may change, which I would immediately bring back to the committee, is if the secretary's, the secretary of state's office needs to tweak any language, there can't be any coercive language in the, in the explanation of a yes or a no vote. So they may ask us to take a word out or change a word, and I would bring that back to the, to the committee, but I don't think it would, you know, unless it's going to completely change the structure, which, based on the meeting with the DLS attorney, I don't think so, then I wouldn't think there would need to be any other votes.
I was just asking, because the motion that was made was just about the language of the first.
Yes, yeah. I am, I am not, I don't think that, we were asked, we were asked as the, from the council to, on the questions, the additional language, I don't believe that that would be under our purview.
Okay.
We can recommend.
Yep.
But that's, that would be a town council decision?
I mean, I think the thought would be that we would like to keep this language as close as we can to this, and it would be more, I don't think the town council would change this language in any way unless we were asked to change it from the state. We're required to change it.
Okay. Can I have an amendment to the motion then to include the additional information that we recommend that the town council also use this additional language pending approval from the state?
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion on the amendment? Can I have a vote on the amendment? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? Hearing none, that motion passes. We are now voting on the question of whether we recommend to the council these two questions, or put forward to the council these two questions along with the amended, I'm sorry, along with the additional language to be included on the ballot explaining the yes and no ballot, ballot. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, can I have a roll call vote, please?
Ms. Leonard?
Yes.
Mr. Littieri?
Yes.
Mr. Matucci?
Yes.
Ms. Petrie?
Yes.
Mr. Pearnton?
Yes.
Ms. Barry?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes. That is, that is done. Do we have any extra public relations tonight?
You know, could I ask another question?
Yes.
Or maybe, I don't know if I need to make a motion. I'd like to make a motion that we discuss our recommendations for the timing of the ballot, the timing and the presentation of this ballot question. So I'd like to make a motion to discuss that.
I don't know if you can do that if it's not on the agenda, but...
Well, you really, you can't, but I think we've already, I think we've already done that already. Pretty sure we did.
We did, but I'm just wondering sort of what's happening to that recommendation.
I don't, I really don't know. I would venture to say that it's going to be the beginning of March.
Okay, but I guess what I'm wondering is, and this is more perhaps a process question, but last time around, we took two votes, right? We took a vote saying that we wanted the language, right? And we also took a vote, which I believe was unanimous, saying we, the school committee, wanted this to appear on a ballot by itself.
Yes.
How does that second vote that we took get presented to the town council?
So I believe it did.
Oh, yeah, it was already there.
At the town council, two town council, three town council meetings ago, and it was, you can tell me, because I could forget, I think it was...
No, it was just, it was put out there. The council has not made a decision on that.
It will, the council will be making a decision.
Oh, yeah, we have to.
I guess my question is, would it be helpful for the council to have a representative from the school committee come and explain that?
The school committee is always welcome to go to a council meeting, and anyone's welcome to make a presentation, so no problem with that. You know, I think the council talked about it, the council, most of the councilors made their opinions on it, so it's not a big secret as to how most of the council feels, and, you know, some of it is just out of our hands, right? If we're, if we're told there's no way we can have an election until X date, then it's going to be relatively simple to make a decision if there's, if it's told, you know, so a lot of it's out of our hands. It depends how quickly we can get something on the ballot. We were told that the best, the first possible best date would be March 14th, or March 11th. March 11th. So we'll see. I mean, we'll know much more about that Tuesday night. But yes, school committee representative is always welcome to speak at the council.
Was there discussion, sorry, may I ask a question?
Yes.
Was there discussion around having this be on its own ballot?
Yes.
And is that...
Well, I mean, that's what the school committee asked, and that was discussed.
That's what we proposed, but I know that that's up in the air, so I'm asking what the status of that is.
I don't know the stat, I mean, if you go by, which is a public meeting, if you go by the, you know, basically poll and the councilors for a quick overview, they all had their concerns, and it was pretty much 50/50 at that point. All councilors went present.
Gotcha. Do you anticipate when the council will make a decision on that?
The hope is that we're going to make this decision Tuesday night.
Okay.
Some of it is going to be dependent on, to make a, I don't know if we would make a decision on a date, because we have to send this to the secretary of state, make sure we don't get any questions coming back, so I don't think we would be definitive on a date.
Sure, but on the, on the ballot being it's...
But I think we would be probably definitive on, is it going to be one ballot, you know, one special election, two special elections, whatever.
And when will that discussion happen? I think is what Julie and I are trying to ask.
I'm sure that discussion will be part of Tuesday night's discussion.
Okay, thank you. Well, in that case, I guess what I'm just wondering, which I will again ask the committee is, it would seem to me that it would behoove us as a school committee to have a representative of a school committee come and present to the town council about why we, as a body, think that it should be on a single ballot. And, and for the sake of transparency, I think, especially since a lot of people in town have been vocally asking for leadership from the school committee around the issue of the override, it seems to me that, again, it would behoove us as a committee to send a representative to explain why we voted, again, I believe unanimously, that it should be on a single ballot. That should be a sole issue.
Are you asking Jim to go on the agenda, Suzanne? Do you want him on the agenda?
Oh, well, I'm asking actually if...
Do you want to do it?
I mean, I would be happy to do it, unless our chair would like to do it, but I do believe someone should do it, and I certainly don't want to usurp the chair's purview, but I feel strongly that somebody from the school committee should appear at the town council meeting, especially because I believe we've all been receiving a number of emails from the public asking for the school committee to take a more vocal presence, a more vocal and public presence as it concerns the override, and I believe strongly this would be a missed opportunity if someone did not appear.
Okay. Thank you for your comments. I'm, I, I think that it is important for you to note on public, to note for the record that you have made the statement and feel very strongly about that. I appreciate that. I think that we as, as representatives of this committee are free to publicly highlight the importance of, of following through with our votes and that we have felt that this, strongly that this is going to be, that this should be its own issue. So I think that continuing to help people to understand why we have asked for that is going to, is important.
So, but I guess the question is, I mean, obviously, I can go and speak. I don't have to be on the agenda to go and speak.
No, we would, we can do that, we are free to do that during their public relations time.
So would...
I'm sorry, during their public comment time.
So I guess I'm asking the committee, I will go do that.
You don't need, we don't need a vote for that.
But I'm saying, I guess my point is, Jen, and maybe I'm the only person who feels this way, but if I speak as an individual or I speak as a representative authority from the school committee is two different things. So I'm asking this committee, if you would like me to speak as a representative authority or just as a private citizen.
That, I don't think that that's something that we can, we can't tell you as a committee, we can't vote on that, so I think that this, I think that you're stating that you want to is probably the best way we can have an offline discussion about, I mean, procedurally, there's nothing for us to do here.
Well, actually, procedurally, there is. It would be for the school committee to be, to get on the agenda, which I believe is...
That's what you're asking for.
Right, that's what I'm asking.
You want the school committee to be on the agenda to present?
Yes, I do, and I don't know if people agree with that, and I'm certainly one member of the school committee, so if the rest of the committee does not agree to that, fine, but it is the purview of the school committee to get on the town council's agenda, correct?
It's the purview of the council president to put you on. He assesses the agenda.
It is, we take requests to be put on an agenda. I, I, you know, you guys get, first of all, we did not vote unanimously on that. I voted no, so we did not vote unanimously, so I want that point to be clear. I think the chairperson stated it impeccably clear that you have the right to go before the town council during public comment at any time. If you choose to request to be on the agenda, send me an email to be on the agenda, and I'll do everything I can to make sure you're on the agenda.
But I can't want to go on the agenda as a representative of the school committee if I'm not representing the school committee, is what I'm trying to say.
I, I can be present at the, at the meeting and represent our vote and explain what we're doing, I mean, that's...
I think, given what Mr. Littieri said, in that it was pretty seemingly a 50/50 split as to whether or not the question should go on its own ballot or paired with something else, I think it's an opportunity to present our view and share it with those folks who may not be on the same side as, as our thinking, and I think we owe it to the community to advocate for what we believe is the right way to move.
Okay. Very much noted.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Littieri, if we can, I, there's a, you have a time for the school to me on the, you have a school committee report, correct?
I do.
Would that be an appropriate time to...
Sure. So what are you requesting?
I am requesting that I be allowed to make a presentation and present our vote for tonight, and then also what we've voted on previously.
Sure.
But not the full committee?
Right.
Because if that's the case, we're going to post that.
What was that?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
If it's the full committee, we have to post a meeting, because we can't be in one spot at the same time.
Well, we, we can all attend, we just can't.
Well, we can all attend.
Yeah.
But if we say we're going to, we're going to be put on the agenda as a committee, that's a meeting.
No, I'm putting the chairperson of the school committee on the agenda.
That's fine.
Yes.
Okay, public relations.
I did not bring public relations, but I have one of my own, just to say, you know, I'm incredibly thankful for the committee. This has been a lot of work, a lot of time. The subcommittee has done a lot of work. I've pretty much bothered everyone on this committee multiple times, but I'm very grateful for the support and the work and the understanding. This is a new process to me. This is a new process to me, I've been part of an override in the past, but not an active member of getting it done, so I just want to express my appreciation to each member of the school committee for your input, feedback, and pushback when needed, because I need that sometimes to, to grow, so thank you very much.
Well, I would like to thank you for your tremendous amount of work that you've put into this, you've worked tirelessly to crunch numbers and pull together reports and language and numerous contacts with state officials and God knows who else, so, you know, we should be thanking you.
Appreciate it, thank you.
I will put in a plug for the Dinner Theater, which is tonight and tomorrow as well, on Thursday as well?
Yes.
So tonight, tomorrow, at Prince's, for anybody who is looking for some great entertainment from our very talented students.
It was really fun, I went last night.
Good, good to know. And this is their 25th anniversary, so excellent.
And Middle School Drama has Lion King Jr. coming up.
Yes.
Weekend of the 31st.
Yes, get your tickets now. Motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Nice have it.